Good evening, folks. Welcome to this Ward 10 Town Hall. We'll just give it another minute as people are just coming into the call now and then we'll get started. Okay, everybody can turn on their cameras. Looks like our numbers have stabilized and welcome. I think I saw Councillor Gary Harvey and Rob Thompson on the list coming into the call. I'd like to welcome those other members of council. And councillor McCann's invited a number of special guests tonight, and I'm going to hand it over to him in just a second here. I'll have more to say in a minute or two, but just by way of introduction to our format, we do town halls in all the wards of Barry. And we do those throughout the course of the year to give you, the residents, an opportunity to ask questions of us and get answers on issues that are important to you. And also for us to give you information on what's going on in the city, around the city, and in the ward. And this virtual format has turned out well because it's allowed people to get on in their pajamas if they want to join our town hall from anywhere at any time. And so thank you for joining us. The format tonight, as I mentioned, will have a number of speakers. And then during the Q and A, Lauren Wilde of my office, who I really want to thank, she sets up these town halls, gets the links ready. And she will play air traffic controller for all of your questions. We had a number that were submitted in advance, but you can also ask questions in the chat. Or, and the best way to do it is to raise your hand in Zoom. That function is on the participant list. If you can raise your hand, then she will call on people in turn to ask their questions and we'll be able to go back and forth. Okay, so without further ado, I'll make some remarks in a minute on things going on in the city. And but for now, I want to hand it over to Ward 10 councillor Mike McCann.
You'll never stop doing that. Thank you, Mayor Jeff Lehman. And yes, thank you, your office, Lauren, for setting all this up. And I'll introduce the fine guest in a brief synopsis, talk about the format. This really is about Ward 10 residents in the city of Barry. And collectively, we've got some really strong leaders in our community here to answer all your questions. And maybe give you some insight and things that you weren't aware of. And just like the mayor did earlier, I'd like to thank, we've got two councillors that are joining us, councillor Thompson and councillor Harvey. Mayor Jeff Lehman.
And I see Jim Harris on the list now too. So welcome to Ward 8 councillor Jim Harris. Thank you all for joining us.
Yep, likewise. Thank you all.
We're not taking their questions though. No questions from them.
No way. And let's hope that they're not in their pajamas, I hope. So tonight's meeting, you know, I think I do things a little differently than some councillors. And I really wanted to put a theme and a strong energy. I really believe the city of Barry is like a teenager in its early twenties when you look at the life of our city. And what that means is that we've got lots of growing pains. We've got lots of transitions to grow into the city that we all know and want it to be. And quite frankly, I believe Barry is one of the most loved cities in Canada. And these strong leaders that we have on Zoom right now are going to help us there. But more importantly, it's the strong community that we have. And Ward 10 is a very vocal and strong community. So thank you for that. So the theme tonight is that this is your city, this is your money, this is your community. Let's find a better way together. And we've got a bunch of guests that we're going to be helping grow this city together. First of all, honoured guest, you know, and I guess partner in crime tonight, Mayor Jeff Lehman. I'd ask Jeff to maybe say a few words once I do the introductions, a bit about the city. And obviously, Michael Prowse, the CEO, together they have offices joining each other. And they really lead this city into great, great prosperity. Also, we're going to talk about police services, right? We've got police services here and I'd really like to say thank you for that. And we're going to have lots of questions from the police because, quite frankly, the city of Barry in Ward 10, the biggest questions and concerns we have is road safety. And I got to tell you, that's pretty great for a city for the biggest problems to have is road safety. Because there's, there's solutions to that. And we're working hard to get to those solutions. And I really got to say, I'm really excited about introducing, you know, the brand new high school, Maple Ridge High School. We've got the new superintendent Dean Mulkey and the new principal Tracy McPhail. And they're going to take a big chunk of the time, you know, after my introduction and talk about the new school. And they've been super kind that they're going to actually do a virtual tour of the new school. Because I know that Ward 10 in the southeast end of Barry have been, you know, not wanting, needing this high school for a very long time. So maybe what I'll do is I'll just talk a little bit of Ward 10, a little bit about my interaction of where I'm going to be moving forward. And then I'll hand it over to the mayor and let him say his, you know, his message. Really starts off with taxes. Other than road safety, you know, taxes are the second most common question and concern that residents have. And I got to tell you that the mayor and council and city staff, the police services, you know, Simcoe County, we really worked hard to make this the lowest tax increase in 20 years, right? And, you know, and I'm sure Jeff Lehman, Mayor Lehman is going to talk a bit more about that. You know, road safety in, in Ward 10, we're getting seven new speed bumps. And I'm sure if you go to Mike McCann, Love is Bear, they're going to be listed there. And they'll be installed probably the end of May, beginning of June. The new high school we talked about, we'll, we'll let the new principal, the new superintendent talk more in detail about when that's going to be happening and what students will be arriving. Recreation and parks, you know, I'm not sure who is a pickleball fan here, but I have had more calls about this sport. But the demand to have more courts. And we just, you know, made the first big move to actually have like a, like a pickleball sports complex that I hope with community support and private support, we're going to be able to have it domed in the winter of 2022. And we're going to have year round pickleball with 14 courts, professional tournament style, just because the sport is growing. And I see six-year-olds on the court and I see 106-year-olds on the court and everybody in between. Also, you know, Wilkins Park, you know, I won't go into too much detail because I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions. But that was an avalanche of momentum that we really had to integrate with City Hall and with the residents. And I think we came to not a good, a great resolution. Because this is just a jewel of city of Barry and we need to preserve it. We need to give it some breathing room. And I think that we've had a real good compromise from residents and from the city. We've got an adopt a park program that we'll be introducing once COVID's over. We also have a Save the Turtles program that will be in Wilkins Park. And I'll be spearheading that next year, unfortunately. I'd like to do it this year, but because of COVID, we can't move forward. And that's going to be a real exciting project. And, you know, we're also going to introduce a motivational and inspirational section in Ward 10. And I started a competition about five years ago called Love Barry and Win. And the mayor and I had the great privilege of introducing the winners for the past five years. It's now become a citywide competition. And I got to tell you, seeing the kids' faces and seeing the teachers and the parents when their children win. To me, just investing in our youth is quite simply one of the best investments that we can do. And we had great winners. We've got the Love Barry sign that I'm spearheading. And I think that's going to be coming to council in a few weeks. And I'm going to be looking for a lot of support in the community. I need to fundraise personally $200,000. I said I was going to walk the walk and talk the talk. I feel a great sense of vision that this is just what Barry doesn't need. But actually, sorry, doesn't want, but actually needs. And so many great cities around the world have a sign. And I really believe that this will be Barry's new landmark. And talking to staff, I think they've come up with a positioning in Heritage Park. We're actually going to have the spirit catcher behind it. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. And I know you're going to be looking forward to seeing that. And last but not least, I'm going to be introducing in the fall, a, an inspiring and motivational sign project. Where I'm going to be talking to all the elementary schools and maybe Tracy, maybe some of the high school students, even though they're not moved in yet. You know, George Rumbel, the school for the deaf, you know, I want to have every institute in Ward 10. And maybe I'll even get the police services to put a sign up, an inspirational message. And I'd like to have, you know, 10, 20, 30 of them spread across all of Ward 10. And whether it's something, you know, individual that you've made up and authentic you've made up. Or maybe it's a saying that you heard, you know, five minutes ago, five years ago, five decades ago. I just want to inspire this great ward of ours and inspire this great city of ours. So should I see a raise of hands? Who's sick and tired of hearing me talk? On that note, I'll be answering lots of questions in about, you know, 15, 20 minutes. And Jeff, if you can take it away from now, would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor and credit to the one person who raised their hand in the participants list. Okay, so thank you very much councillor McCann. And I do, I want to talk about a couple of things, additional things, of course, that'll be of interest in the southeast part of the city and in Ward 10. But I want to talk about the big issues affecting the city, of course, just at least for a few moments. And COVID, of course, is on everyone's mind. I want to give you a fundamentally positive message though in the next 30 seconds. And, you know, I just recorded a COVID update for the first time in a while. We're now vaccinating more than 1% of the population a day. We're over half of the adult population. What that means is we are three to four weeks away from what should be population level immunity and the kind of scenes that you're seeing in countries in Europe and the UK and Israel and other places that are a little ahead of Canada in vaccinations. Tomorrow, we will surpass the United States in the percentage of our population vaccinated. And that is because of a collective effort and a commitment to fighting COVID that all of you and all of us have made as a country that rivals a wartime level effort. And it is the wartime of our generation. The commitment that people have shown to each other and need to show to each other for just a few more weeks to get to the very end of this is absolutely extraordinary. And as mayor of the city, I have never been prouder than in watching things like Barry families unite, grow to 13,000 people in one Facebook group committed to helping each other. And now they're an organization with a warehouse and charities distributing clothes and, and helpful products and things that people need to hundreds and hundreds of low-income families. That's the kind of community that we live in. And we've shown our stripes during COVID. We're almost to the end. We're not quite there. We will hopefully hear, there's rumors this evening coming out of Queens Park that there will be an announcement about outdoor recreation as early as tomorrow. And hopefully, a little earlier than June 2nd, the province will lift some of those restrictions. But it is really hitting that point in vaccinations when life can start to go back to normal. And when all this sacrifice, all this difficulty, all the challenges that we've all faced will pay off. And I think that day is very, very close at hand. So I wanted to tell you that because I'm feeling very good about it today, having spoken with folks at Queens Park today and getting new data from the health unit and the messages that they're giving out. We've also done a very good job locally. We're down to about 40 average new cases a day in Simcoe, Muskoka. And that's a level we haven't seen since early March. In terms of the city itself, we are, as councillor McCann said, so committed to coming back strong. We are preparing many of the things we love, like patios, the patios everywhere program and the open air Dunlop event in our downtown so that we can enjoy the core area of our city. And whether it's at Park Place, in a strip plaza, where some of those patios go out into the parking lots or in the heart of our downtown, eating outdoors is going to be one of the first things we are able to do. And I actually want to encourage people to do it because it is a way to help one of the hardest hit sectors, which has been our restaurants. This is a very unusual economic recession. It's called a K-shaped recession, also called a she session. Because it's disproportionately hit sectors where women are the bulk of employees, such as food and accommodations, such as the cultural sector. And so as a community, we will have to try and do everything we can as we come out of COVID to help them recover. And city council has been putting programs together and our staff have been putting programs together to try and help that happen wherever we are in the city. Now, having said that, a little bit about how we're going and how we're growing. You know, in Ward 10, like in many other areas of the city, the real estate market is absolutely on fire. If you own your home, you own an asset that's worth 40% more than it was a year ago, which is astonishing. It also creates enormous challenges, as you can imagine, for anybody trying to rent a home, rent an apartment or purchase a home. It's obviously put it out of reach of more and more people. And so as you see those new subdivisions growing on the other side of Mapleview and in the southwest along Essa Road, you're seeing a different kind of subdivision. You're seeing a broader range of housing, much like what we see in the east end of Barry and older neighborhoods where we see three-story apartment buildings and four-story apartment buildings with townhouses with homes. And that mix is what will make more homes affordable for people to purchase. But we're also going to have to build a lot more rental housing. And that, a lot of that will happen in and around our core area. We're seeing a crane downtown for the first time in 11 years. But what's also really interesting is we're seeing it in places like Bayfield and Hamner and Young and Ashford and Little Lake, where apartment buildings are being built for people at different stages of life, a lot of them for seniors. And also for those starting out in life, who need to be able to find an affordable place to live and rent. So that's a major issue. And of course, this is in many ways changing our city. And I'm happy to chat about that if people have questions. Just a couple of quick notes on the ward because I'll leave most of that to Mike. And I know there'll be some comments from our friends here at the school board and the Barry Police about local issues. Mike's absolute safety and by that, people are concerned about speeding and increasingly noisy vehicles. It's a thing during COVID. It's got way worse. Sergeant Chris Allport's here from our Barry Traffic Unit. They ran a very successful operation last summer. You probably, if you're on social media, you saw the great work that our comms folks did to show some of the work that was being done to try and stop that particular problem. But speeding is very serious and can be absolutely tragic as we saw in Vaughan just a couple of days ago. So fighting speeding is accomplished through traffic calming, through enforcement, through education. And all three of those things we have expanded in Barry, both through the police and through the city's traffic calming efforts over the past several years. The last thing I just want to say to all of you as residents is, I want to, I want to say how much I appreciate the commitment that I often hear from Ward 10 residents to their neighborhoods. Often, when we, when Lauren or Nina from my office are both on the call tonight, when we receive, we receive about 2,000 to 3,000 messages a week. Partly because we have 11 inboxes, if you can believe it. And across those inboxes, when we hear from Ward 10 residents so often, it's from people who care and are committed to their community, to their street and to their neighbors. And for that, thank you. And I look forward to your questions tonight. Oh, you, Mike?
Nobody reads lips here anymore? No? Okay. We've got three members of the police services. So should I hand it over to them?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I can start if you'd like. Thanks for having us. It's exciting to be coming to all of these ward meetings. Because, I mean, you said something about finding a better way together. And that really is what Barry Police, we've been working to do. In the last little year, in the last year, we've been really drilling down per ward and looking at the ward's issues specific to the ward. So recognizing that Ward 10 is going to be different than Ward 2 and Ward 3 will be different than Ward 5. And so when we look at the stats from Ward 10, the top three calls for service in 2020, mind you, it wasn't a normal year. But they do seem to be consistent over the years. But your top call was 911 or 911 hangups, which is not abnormal. And your second call was Highway Traffic Act. So a lot of calls for traffic concerns. And then your third call was police assistance, which can range from anything from, you know, kids in the park or you're worried about someone's hanging around a vehicle, you might think that something is going to happen there. We also sent out a survey last year and we were so successful, we got about 2,000 people responding. So thank you, COVID. I think everyone was sitting by their computer. But we got some great data from that as well. So we were able to sort of compare our calls for service to the question that we asked residents is what are your top three community safety and wellbeing concerns? And what we heard from Ward 10, no surprise, your number one concern was traffic. And two and three were kind of tied. So you had trouble with youth and you had theft from your vehicles. So they really were marrying up the calls for service and your concerns. So out of that, what we've done in the last year, and I don't know if the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, if anybody is aware of that, that's the city's plan that, that should launch soon. But from that, we added a position, which is Constable Kira Brooks. So she's your community safety and wellbeing officer. And her role will be to interact very closely with the councillors. We're going to try and address some of these concerns from more of a proactive approach. So you guys had 1,758 calls for service last year just to Ward 10 alone. And so those are calls that are coming in, you know, when something's happening or after something's already happened. So we really want to start looking at ways to prevent some of those crimes from happening. So those thefts from vehicles, we can prevent some of those. The youth in the park, you know, let's give them something else to do. Let's educate them. So that's really the idea. That's, that's the goal with, with Constable Brooks. I will also speak a little bit to traffic because I know everybody wants to hear about it. And you should know that we did deal with 481 traffic calls last year in Ward 10 alone. So that's not only us going to calls for service for traffic, but that's Chris's team going out and issuing tickets for those, those that are offending. So we are out there. I know that, I think we, they want to see us more, but we are trying. And there are a lot of other wards in the city. But I don't know if Chris wants to add anything to the traffic from a traffic perspective?
Yeah, sure. I do recognize that Ward 10 does have some major arteries, such as Big Bay Point and Mapleview with some secondary streets, Prince William Way and Hurst. We're, we're, we're aware that there's a lot of speeding that's going along those routes. And we're doing what we can to monitor that speeding and obviously dealing with what we can. Also in relation to modified vehicles, we're trying to obviously identify them and follow up with the drivers. But we can't be everywhere, everywhere all the time. So the more information that we get from the citizens that are concerned about what's going on in their pockets where they reside, the more information we get, the more we can help deal with it to prevent anything further happening. So I know that we've been in communication with the councillors in relation to certain forums that if you have, if you have some information that you want to provide about a noisy vehicle in your neighborhood or people speeding down the street, you can report that online through our website as well as you can contact your councillor. And they can contact me or you can contact me directly and we can try to deal with it.
Perfect. And I'll just let, Kira, did you want to jump in and introduce yourself?
Good evening. Hi, everyone. One thing I'll just add to Staff Sergeant Gates' report that you can do as a community to really help us out, when she talked about the thefts from motor vehicles that are a concern. They are a concern, however, sometimes the numbers are low. So you, as a community, can utilize our online reporting system. And simply, if you have had your car broken into, that's what you guys normally say it as, is broken into. Report it online because that way we can track where it's happening. A lot of times, communities will get together and they'll talk about, oh, I had my car entered or, oh, I had my car entered. But they don't necessarily all report it. If you report it, we can track it. And then we send out officers to specific areas and we look for patterns. So we will definitely be enforcing that. And it's a really good tool that we can use. As well as if you have an at-home camera, super important to go onto our website and register your at-home online security camera. So that if there is a theft from a motor vehicle or a break and enter in your community or something suspicious, we can look at our map and say, oh, you know, one, two, three, Hurst Avenue or Golden Meadow has a camera on it. We can go and knock on your door or give you a phone call and say, hey, can we have you look at your camera between the hours of midnight and 3:00 AM? There was someone suspicious lurking around your neighborhood and you can help us out. That's all I want to add.
Well, listen, thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add? And thank you, Staff Sergeant Gates and Constable Brooks and Sergeant Allport. And you don't mind staying along for the full hour to answer some questions afterwards? Okay, well, I'd like to speed along real quickly here and introduce our school board. We've got new superintendent Dean Mulkey and the new principal Tracy McPhail. Guys, you know, if you don't mind taking about five, 10 minutes and just maybe sharing the excitement that Ward 10 is going to have and who's going to participate. And obviously, we're looking forward to this virtual tour.
That's great. Thanks very much, Mayor Lehman and councillor McCann for having us here tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak about the new school because it is very exciting for this area. I will have to thank councillor McCann for being part of the naming process. He was a steady voice at that table. So thank you. And I always look forward to your Twitter posts advertising that process, councillor McCann. So thank you. I am the SO for this area of schools in Ward 10. And it's a pleasure to serve down in that area. The school communities and the parents and the kids are wonderful. And I really enjoy my time down there with those schools. I would like to pass things on to Tracy McPhail. So she is the principal of Maple Ridge Secondary School. And you probably have received communication from her, I'm sure, in the last little bit via email just regarding the school and what's happening. But Tracy is a very innovative leader. She brings a wealth of experience from all aspects of education. She's, she's been around the education field. So I can't be more pleased to have her leading this flagship school for Barry. So with that, I'll, I'll pass it over to Tracy to, to take you on a little bit more tour for Maple Ridge Secondary School. Thanks, Trace.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. We are going to share some images tonight of the school and some of the philosophy of the school in terms of what we're preparing. It's been a pretty exciting process. I do have a bit of a slideshow, so I'm just going to share that. Hopefully, that works okay. Everybody can still see that? Looks great. Okay. All right. So the first thing you'll notice on, on the screen is that we do have a new mascot. So the mascot of the school was determined by a process that we went through with our students. So the students that are going to be the first students at the school engage in the competition. And they, they submitted all sorts of different names for the mascot. And so the mascot was determined based on student voice. And you can see here that it is the Ravens, so the Maple Ridge Ravens. And they also contributed to the development of the, of the actual logo. There was a competition where they submitted some designs and the designs were collated. And then we worked with a graphic artist to come up with the design. And very soon, each student that contributed a design will, will receive an email that says, you know, here's the new logo. And here's how your design contributed to the final product. So one of the things that is very important to us is student voice. And so that is something that has been driving the vision of the school from the very beginning as we've been working through the planning process. So one of the goals is to have a very clear vision. And as part of that, we've been using a process called inclusive design. Inclusive design is a process whereby we're constantly asking ourselves the question, what students are being advantaged in the process of planning? And what students and families and community members may be disadvantaged as a result of some of the organizational structures that might be traditional in a school? So through that, we've been looking at our instructional program. We've been looking at our parent, family and community engagement, the actual environment or design of the classrooms and the classroom spaces, the leadership for our staff and for our students. We've, we've been collecting data and one of those sources of data so far has been consistent use of student voice. So making sure that the students are contributing to the vision of the school. So that we can create a school that has the very best welcoming environment for all students that will be part of our school community. The other major focus of the school is to think of our program through the lens of creating cultures of thinking. So we want our students to be able to see themselves in the school. And we want them to learn how to engage in a thinking process that no matter what the curriculum area, that they are able to recognize how they're thinking and how their thinking is contributing to solving issues or problems. So when I heard councillor McCann ask about the inspirational sign messages, you know, that's something that our student population would be very happy to engage in and to think about, what are those ways that they can contribute to their community through a problem-solving lens? So if they notice some problems or issues in the community, then how can they be part of the solution? And use the curriculum that they're learning to engage in that process, to come up with a solution. Part of that could be, you know, inspirational signs that would be addressing some of those things that they've been learning about. Part of that could be, you know, inspirational signs that would be addressing some of those things that they've been learning about. We uh, Counselor McCann also mentioned that I would try to do a bit of a virtual tour. Um, I'd love to be in the school actually doing it. But so I, instead of that, I've, I've put together some uh pictures. So we do have an excellent facility. The facility is going to be um above. And like, it's just gorgeous. It's really going to be a beautiful facility. And the, there's a big open communal spaces. So of course, these are construction pictures. So it's going to look much prettier than this in the end. But this is actually the entryway of the school. So when you enter from the bottom floor, coming in the school from the athletic fields. Um, there's a big open area that will have communal spaces for students to collaborate and to congregate. Once we're allowed to. So that's a, that's a really exciting spot. You can see here, there is a, a place for students to sit. And we've, we've purchased um different things to make that space really um community-driven. We do have a state-of-the-art athletic facility. And that's one of the major things that um was part of the, the construction process. So the gym itself is state-of-the-art, uh, including the sound system and the scoreboard. And everything else that you would associate with the gym. And then, of course, we do have, oops, went too far. Um, yeah, sorry. Okay, I can't get back. Um, of course, if you've been by the school, you've seen the athletic field out front. So the Astro Church Field, uh, the first one in the city of Barry for any of our schools in the board. And um, there will be an eight-lane rubberized athlete, uh, track. That will be um available for hosting of major athletic, you know, track and field events. So that uh, that is really exciting. We are planning for a progressive learning commons. So the learning commons, we would, in a, in a traditional school would caught, be called the library. Um, but we're talking about a learning call, commons to go along with that theme of creating cultures of thinking. And engaging students in the thinking process. So we've created, uh, we've purchased interesting furniture for the space. And the technology to go along with it to allow students to collaborate and share their work and share their thinking with each other. And with their teachers and the, and others in the community, once we get to the point where we can invite people in. We have lots of specialized technology programs. So uh, construction, healthcare, which is going to be important moving forward as we come out of COVID nineteen. Uh, communication technology. So those are three of the programs. The technology um uh classrooms are at the end of the school. And they're big, beautiful rooms. So um, this is going to be the construction technology lab. So at the, at some point, there will be all sorts of state-of-the-art. I just finished doing the purchasing for this room. So there's all sort of state-of-the-art construction uh equipment, including our CNC machines, laser cutters. All sorts of interesting things that will have students learning um state-of-the-art techno- technological skills. Uh, to enable them to, you know, join the skilled trades, which is really important. We also have computer engineering, transportation technology and technological design. And here's the, you can see the hoist in the background of this image. Um, this will be the transportation lab. So there'll be two hoists where students can learn um all about cars. And of course, other forms of transportation as well. And our classrooms are being designed to be future-ready. So we've picked uh furniture that allows for interaction and, and collaborative learning. But can also be separated if we need to, uh, coming into the fall. And um, we've also, we're also working on making sure that teachers are not connected to a projector via a cable. They can actually move about the classroom, be absolutely wireless and, and, and not tethered to the front of the classroom. So that we can um have teachers engaging very closely with the students and working in small groups. With them to uh really create that culture of thinking. And we're, we're looking at ways to capital, capitalize on all of the different forms of multimedia. Here are some pictures of, of the classroom spaces. So um, the, every classroom has this kind of um board at the front where the, it's all whiteboards. There's no chalkboards in the school at all. Um, everything's whiteboard. Um, one of the things we are working on as well is reducing our paper consumption to contribute to uh the environment. Uh, here's a picture of the science labs as they're being prepared. So you can see that the, there are peninsula lab stations where students will be, there's eight in each of the six science labs. And so this, students will be able to collaborate around those peninsula stations. To really um engage with each other in the scientific process. We have two visual arts studios that are beautiful, open spaces with lots of natural light. And our arts uh teacher is planning a studio-like space. Where students will engage in both um at a desk type or at a workbench type situation. But also at easels and other things so that students really get that experience of what, what can a studio experience be like? And finally, we do see ongoing progress at the school. This was a very recent picture just today. It's the first time I saw that the lockers are in the, in the school. So it's starting to look more and more like a school. And uh, we're, we're really um pushing and making sure that we're going to be absolutely ready on September the seventh. To uh greet our students and we're super excited about that. That's it.
Tracy, thank you very much. Uh, that uh almost gets me so excited that I want to go back to high school. Uh, you know, is, is my nose growing? No, okay. Uh, you know, creating cultures of thinking, like that is just uh twenty-first century next level. And uh, you know, quite frankly, this school compared to all the other high schools in Barry is just night and day. Like you've really raised the bar. And uh, maybe I'll just ask a, a, a couple of questions uh that maybe the residents would have. Opening is gonna be September seventh of next year. And uh, is there gonna be any opportunity for families and uh um, students to go into the school before the seventh? You maybe, you maybe can get back to me on that when I'm reading your body language. Okay, great.
Well, I, I can, I can, our hope is absolutely. Um, there are transition events that typically take place before school starts. Um, in that, you know, last week of uh just before Labor Day. That being said, it all depends on whether we have occupancy of the building, whether the COVID nineteen protocols allow for that. So there's, there's a lot of um up in the air about that. But absolutely, if we can, we will absolutely find ways to have students be able to visit the school. And if not, we will be providing virtual tours um on our website. So that uh families can go and, and see the virtual spaces. I'll do a virtual walk-around. We'll do a live stream. We'll do all sorts of things to make sure that people know and can see the school in advance.
Yeah, uh, Dean, just something, thank you for that.
No, I, I just wanted to, Tracy actually covered that. Just gonna say, we, we, if we can't get them into the school, we will bring the school to them.
For those tours. That this time next year that uh we're allowed to put many people in there. Uh, capacity and uh grades. I understand that there's a, you're not having grades, one to always, or I guess it's one to twelve now. Can you maybe give a little insight on how you're integrating the students into the high school, please? Anybody?
Yep. So we, the, the, the starting grades, sorry, Trace, the starting grades will, will start with grade nines and tens. And then each year will grow out from there. So the next following year will be grades elevens. And then we'll, the, the fourth year will have grade nine through twelve. So it's, it's starting with the smaller numbers. Um, but certainly Tracy has some great ideas and how to integrate them and uh, and give them what they need those first few years. So we'll start with smaller numbers.
And the capacity for each grade or the, the school in five years will be? Like the student capacity?
Trace, are you all right with that?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, at the moment, we have four hundred and sixty students registered for September for grades nine and ten. Each year we will add between two hundred and two hundred and fifty students. Ultimately, within four years will be just over a thousand students.
Okay, great. You know, one, maybe just last comment. Uh, for those who don't know, I'm an entrepreneur. I own four businesses. And uh, I know that Ward ten has, almost like every other house is filled with entrepreneurs. So I'm sure the students will be, you know, uh, from an entrepreneurial family. I would love to uh work with you and with uh the residents of uh Ward ten. And building some after-school entrepreneurship and teaching our uh, our students uh about entrepreneurship. And uh, I think it's a uh, a, a big gap in, in our school system. And uh, I would like to uh offer my services and I know there's a lot of businessmen and women uh that would love to uh join that uh, that. So, well, to be continued, I'll say, unless you have something to add.
Oh, for sure, Counselor McCann. Yeah, we're, we're the school and I, and speaking with Trace here, big on community partnerships. So um, that kind of uh learning and experience for children would uh be welcome at Maple Ridge. So thank you for that offer.
Great. Well, I can't wait uh for uh Ward ten to take on the rest of Barry on any sports. Uh, you'll see me at the, the field. So uh, Mayor Lehman. Uh, do, should we hand this over to uh Lauren from your office to maybe take uh questions and, and direct us?
Yeah, so I thank you very much again, uh, Principal Superintendent and uh Constable Brooks, Sergeant Alport, Staff Gates. Thank you all for uh, for your remarks. Um, Lauren will, uh, I think, direct questions. We did have a significant number pre-submitted. But uh, again, folks who are here tonight, um, and just to be clear, uh, I can stick around a little bit later than eight. I know some of our guests do have to leave, but um, because we've only got fifteen minutes left for questions, we will, uh, I'm, I'm able to stay. I'm sure uh Counselor McCann can as well to, to answer a few more questions from residents if there are them. Uh, so Lauren, do you want to get started in giving us some of the questions that people have?
Yes, thanks so much. So just a reminder to participants, if you would like to ask your question in person, you can just raise your hands using the Zoom function. And I will um add you to the meeting. And then if you don't feel comfortable asking yourself, please feel free to use the Q and A box and I'm happy to ask on your behalf. So we do have a hand up from Eric. So Eric, if you can unmute yourself, I have added you to the conversation.
Hi, Mike. Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Eric. How you doing?
Um, my question, I, I, I got a couple of questions. My, my first one is kind of minor, but are they coming back around to do more street sweeping? Uh, Mike knows Chamberlain Court very well. Uh, and it seems that uh, they, they skimmed over us this year. They dumped so much sand this year. The kids made giant piles of it. Uh, and when the, the sweepers came by a couple of weeks ago, it just didn't get done.
Yeah, we can send it back. Thanks, Eric. Thanks for letting us. Okay, and my. We take notes tonight. We'll make sure we follow these up.
Perfect. And my second question is this year, uh, uh, last year with uh, with COVID and everything that went on. The, the beaches seem to be overrun in the city of Barry and local residents just stayed away. Because, and this is like the tiny beaches like Wilkins and whatever else. Um, and, and talking to bylaw last year, they had said that they wanted to educate people instead of enforcement. Um, and, and I noticed vehicles parked on people's front lawns and, and there was just no respect. Is there a plan this year to actually enforce uh the rules and the laws in, in the city of Barry?
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll take that with Mayor Lehman and you can maybe ask anything I missed out. Uh, yeah, Eric, great question. And uh, last year obviously wasn't an anomaly. And uh, uh, with COVID and we had so many uh people from around, you know, Ontario coming to Barry. Because quite frankly, it's one of the best beaches in Ontario. And so we've actually, uh, council has uh made some uh management uh priorities and strategies. That are gonna relieve, uh, we believe, a, a lot of the, the beach traffic from out-of-towners. And the first thing that we're doing is that we banned uh tents. A lot of uh different communities would come to Barry and put a tent up at eight in the morning. It wouldn't leave until eight at night. So uh, we, we banned uh tents all across the beaches. We've also banned uh barbecues. Uh, so therefore, families that would like to come up, whether they're local or whether they're from other parts of uh Ontario, uh, that coming up. And uh, not really contributing financially to our economy and using our beaches. Uh, so local residents can't use them. This, I'm sure, will uh, will uh change that culture. Uh, thirdly, we've uh uh strengthened our parking and made it more strict. Uh, in certain areas across uh our beachlands. Uh, definitely our boutique beaches like uh, like um uh, Wilkins, uh, like um Johnson's. Uh, we've actually put up uh stronger uh parking restrictions. Uh, fourth, at Wilkins, as a pilot project, I've actually uh, uh, asked council and they've approved. Uh, that we've actually have uh tow-away signs. You know, it's a, it's my opinion and my experience that, you know, there are people that are, uh, you know, um. You know, law abiders and there are people that, uh, you know, don't abide by the law. And I believe these tow-away signs will uh, will um, quite frankly, change the habits of uh people that don't abide by the law. Because maybe paying a hundred dollar fine doesn't really concern them, but having their car towed uh will concern them. So to get to your question now about are we going to increase enforcement, uh, the answer to that question is going to be yes. Uh, there will be stronger enforcement. Uh, we are going to have uh bylaw and, you know, I definitely can't direct the police. And uh, they're here listening, so uh, maybe they can answer. But um, uh, we're actually gonna introduce something called a ambassador program. And we're gonna have a bunch of, uh, I believe they're uh, they're part-time students. There may be some full-time uh people. They're gonna be going around to the beaches and educating Barry residents, family and friends of Barry residents and out-of-towners. On really the culture and the do's and don'ts that are acceptable. And quite frankly, they could be fined. So I'm not sure if the mayor has anything to add.
Yeah, Eric, um, there's ten more bylaw officers for this year. There's gonna be more enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. So um, we do have a question about the new high school. If we can ask um the principal perhaps, will the new school have a designated music space or programming?
That's a great question. So absolutely, one of the, the key piece, the board has been really focusing on uh, uh, elementary music. In our elementary schools. So students have been getting significantly more music instruction in our elementary schools from kindergarten to grade eight in the last several years. So we are anticipating uh benefiting from that. And absolutely, we have a instrumental music room. And um, we also are focusing on computers and music. And, and helping students to not only recreate music, but, but also to produce music. So both of those things are a focus for the school.
Great, thanks so much. We do have uh Michael's hand raised. So Michael, I'm gonna let you talk.
Yeah.
If you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, I am. How you doing, guys? First of all, uh, Mayor Jeff, thank you for your leadership during this time of COVID. Uh, you've continued to lead our city in the right direction. Uh, Mr. McCann, thank you for always being responsive and for having the interests of Ward ten uh always at heart. Barry Police Service, my hat's off to, to, to all the men and women that serve and protect us within this uh great community. So my question uh is, uh, I'm an avid cyclist, but what I do notice is the bike lanes are fantastic. That go from Kingswood to downtown, but the lake shore is a complete disaster and needs to be swept. Like there's chunks of brick and again, I'm clipped in. Um, if you hit a rock uh doing about forty, thirty, forty kilometers an hour, it, it won't be pretty. So i- if, does the city have plans to kind of resweep these, these areas?
Yeah, absolutely, Mike. Uh, we're gonna have the sweepers uh out again. And obviously, that's what these uh town hall meetings are for, you know, to uh educate us. And uh, um, you know, I, I cycle the waterfront on a daily basis as well. And I'm constantly letting uh staff know that there's certain areas that need to be reswept. We had a uh, just a, a lot of sand this year. So that's why the excess. So we're in the middle of street sweeping right now. So if you can be a little patient with us, uh, we should have this all wrapped up in a few weeks.
Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. We do have a question with regards to traffic calming measures. Um, we do have two questions regarding traffic calming measures, actually. So um, if we can speak to uh potential traffic calming measures along Hurst Drive. As well as some concerns regarding Grand Forest. Is there going to be permanent or traffic, uh, permanent or temporary traffic calming measures in that area?
I'm sorry, is it Julie, is that uh Julie? Who, who's the question from?
I'm sorry, it, there's two questions. One is pre-submitted and one has been um in our Q and A.
Lauren, if you don't mind, maybe what I'll do is I'll just read off all the uh speed cushions that we're gonna have in the ward. I'll read off the radar uh boards and maybe I'll read off the, the permanent uh speed bumps. That, that probably be easier so everybody has an idea. So we're not getting more questions on uh permitted and uh seasonal speed cushions. Does that sound good? So uh, the temporary. Does that sound good? So the temporary speed cushions that should be installed, I'd say the next 10 to 15 days would be Sovereign's Gate, one crossing, that'd be 319 Sovereign's Gate, the Queen's Way, there's going to be two crossings. King, Sun King Crescent, one crossing, 139 Golden Meadow, one crossing, 81 Crimson Ridge, one crossing, 331 Succession Crescent, one crossing. And on Dock Road, this is a, a road that is shared with Counselor Jim Harris and myself. And Jim Harris and I have many, many conversations with residents from Dock Road. And there's going to be a four-way stop that Counselor Jim Harris and I asked council to support. And we've also installed two temporary speed bumps in the ward. So that's, that's a shared ward, a shared bump. Sorry, shared two bumps. Radar speed boards, which are very easily moved, are going to be Pine Drive around Bay Shore Park, Succession Crescent, right near the Queen's Way and, and also on the Queen's Way West. Permanent, obviously on Sun King, there's one and on Sandringham, there's one. And there's going to be two more added in the fall. And that's going to be on the Queen's Way and on Succession. And just to add, maybe, maybe just to add that, you know, the city of Barry has 10 wards and we try to, you know, be fair to all wards. And most wards, I believe, have about five speed cushions. And we in Ward 10 have, have nine. So we've got more than our fair share. They built the roads wide. Speed is a major, you know, concern. And so just let you know that Ward 10 has more speed management than any other ward in City Barry.
Thanks for the comments, Counselor. So we do have a raised hand from Barry. Barry, I will allow you to talk if you can unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counselor McCann. Yes.
And Barry.
You talked about the signs and how important it is to the city. You talked about the issues at Wilkins Park and how the great resolutions that occurred last year. This year I met a by law officer and that by law officer informed me that in contravention to the.
I'm sorry, Barry, you just muted yourself?
Last, last.
You're back.
I don't know where you got, where did I leave off at?
You were just telling us something that a by law officer told you.
Yes, I talked to a by law officer and in contravention with the agreement that was, and the resolutions that were met last year, that warnings were not going to be issued because the signage was the warning itself. And this by law officer told me that that has been rescinded. And now you are going to issue warnings, try to educate people and do the enforcement side. And the community, like the agreement between City Hall and the community was that it's going to be immediate fines for non-compliance. Thank you.
Barry, if you don't mind, you know, did you talk to this by law officer in 2021 or was this last year you talked to the by law officer?
Last week.
Yeah, last week. And was it down at Wilkins Park?
Yes.
Yeah. So obviously we heard you loud and clear about the management and about the stress that out of towners have had on our beaches, especially Wilkins Now Park. And, you know, obviously for us to direct by law is something that we don't do, but it has been, it has been relayed by council that stricter rules and more fines need to be laid out for people and less, less education. And that's why we've introduced the ambassadors. So, you know.
So there is no, so you're, you're, you're going back on commitment made last year?
I don't think we're going back on it. No, but I think that, sorry, what commitment did I make last year?
Well, the commitment that I understand was that the signage is the warning and tickets will be issued for non, non-compliance.
Barry, you know, it's going to be discretionary with the by law officer, right? You mean, it's not going to be a black and white answer. I understand your frustration. I mean, I feel your frustration as well, but to give you a blanket answer, I'm not prepared to answer that. I'm not sure if Mayor Jeff Lehman is, but you know, they're going to be having some discretionary, you know, variance. But if your question is, is there going to be more enforcement? Is there going to be stricter rules? Then the answer is going to be yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So we do have a question from the audience, just again about the, the school. Wondering why it is a phased approach to the introduction of students, why we can't take more advantage of that space?
Tracy, are you all right with that?
That's a great question. So every high school that we've ever opened in Simcoe County has, has used a phased approach to bringing students into the school. Part of the reason for that is for students who are in the senior grades at their existing school. So if I'm a student at an existing school and I have, you know, made a, I've, I've become part of that community and I'm in grade 12 or I'm in grade 11, I'd like to stay at my, my existing school so that I can graduate from that school. So we kind of work that phased approach to support those students to continue with the school that they've made that commitment to and that they've become part of the school community. And so we start with grade nines and tens. It also allows us to build a program and to build that culture of inclusiveness and all the things that you want the school to become. Those students, as they come in, they become the, the ambassadors for the school and they gradually, you know, get to be that first graduating class. So our grade 10s that come in will have the privilege of being the first graduates and then our grade 9s will be next. So, so it allows us to also build that graduation process, including the development of scholarships and different things. So there's a variety of reasons, but most of all, it's to support students who wouldn't be transitioning from a school that they have a commitment to.
Amazing. Thank you so much for that. We do have a raised hand from Linda. Linda, I'm going to allow you to talk if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
I have a question for the police. I'm wondering, we have an issue down here with the teens basically on Friday and Saturday nights. And I'm sure that once the summer comes, we may have some during the week, but predominantly it's on the weekends. And basically as soon as it gets dark, you can hear the skateboards or the cars pulling up. And yeah, there's parties happening down on the beach and they are already taking the, the wood fence that was recently put up and they're using that for firewood. So I'm wondering, by the time that we call in to say that there's an issue, by the time that the police are able to respond, is there a way in which that the police could start using a regular patrol just so the word can get out that police are coming by and they're, you know, having an influence down here to help to sort of maybe stop some of this, because especially coming close to the end of the school season, the parties just increasingly get worse. The other thing I wanted to say is that we're also, there's needles been found on the beach. And I'm wondering if there is some way in which that the city would start to take some responsibility for cleaning that beach or patrolling that beach for needles or even having a needle drop off box. We need something to protect so that the children are not walking in the sand and stepping on needles. The other one, the other question I have is parking on these roads coming down here to the beach. It's really unsafe. Basically all through this sort of subdivision coming down Crimson Ridge, is there a way in which that the city would look at having parking on one side of the road for a three-month period, then alternating it or even doing it every six months? Just so that way, then the kids that are on the side of the road where there are no sidewalks are not being blocked in by cars parked on both sides of the driveway and you can't see them. And cars are accelerating to get through. When there's a car coming from the other direction, they start to accelerate to try to beat that car coming into that area. And I just have some concerns about people trying to exit on the other side. And it, it's almost impossible if you have a trailer or if you have C do's to try to back into your driveway at any point through the day or get out of your driveway. It makes it extremely difficult to be able to get onto the road or get off the road in, due to parking on both sides of the road coming up basically on Crimson Ridge, but it will filter elsewhere as well. I can, I can tell you that it's not just Crimson. Up in the court, there's issues up there as well. And the last question was, when are the signs going to start going up regarding parking and parking passes around this area to just sort of protect and deter non-residents from parking so close to the beach? Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, I think I got four of them there. I'm all trying to, I'll, I'll do one, ones for the police, ones for Michael Prowse and ones for Mike McCann. I'm going to think, well, let me say the Sharps disposal, Linda, for sure. Unfortunately, that is something that we have had to install in a few locations around the city. The yellow Sharps disposal bins, it's, it's possible for us to get them, but the, the big challenge is you've got to empty them. They can't be left alone. So we have to make sure that they can be emptied and properly taken care of. Val, did you want to address the patrolling for the partying at night?
Absolutely. Definitely. We can assign our neighborhood policing officer to do some extra patrols. If you want to just contact me or through your counselor to me, just to let me know the areas that you're having concerns with, you can also report them online and then we have that database and we can start doing directed patrols as well. Either way, that, that'll all work. You're right. If you call us, by the time we get there, they're, they're usually gone, but we try. But yeah, just let us know the areas and we'll make sure there's extra patrols assigned.
I could tell you now, it's Wilkins Park down at the beach and then up the trail across the other side over by Camelot. They go up on that mountain that there's a embankment up there and they're partying up there, but you can hear them. They start around nine, nine thirty and it's consistent. And I mean, they're, all of them come down with backpacks. So the fires are already starting and the damage to what the city has just done down there is already.
Yeah, it's frustrating. Thanks for letting us know, Linda. Mike Prowse, would you happen to know when signs, the parking signs? Because this is in a number of areas that parking signs are due. Do you know when they're going up?
Sure, Mayor Lehman. I believe the, the parking restrictions go into effect June 15th and signage has already started to go up and will all be complete before that.
Awesome.
And, and where is the tow zone? Where is the tow zone going to be down here in Ward 10, Mike?
Mike, you're mute.
Thank you, Linda. Just to add, the signs will be going up sometime late May, beginning of June. The, the parking restriction will be from January, sorry, from June 15th to September 15th. And the tow away zones will be 500 meters from, from Wilkins Park.
And that would be first offense? It doesn't matter if you're a Barry resident or whomever it is, the, the car will be towed?
Unfortunately, no. I kind of wish you didn't ask this question, but yes, I'll answer it. I was wanting to be very aggressive this year and tow away the vehicles. But there were certain council members that wanted to be a little softer and didn't want to tow away some. So actually this year, there's going to be no enforcement. Council voted, I think it was a 10 to one vote, that we don't actually tow anybody this year, that it's a year of just signs and the enforcement will start next year. And just to maybe, just to add, Linda, is that the Barry police, quite frankly, said that this would be such a low priority on their radar anyways, that it may be redundant. So.
Is there any way in which that where it says no parking, that can be a tow zone, just in the, the small part around the entrance into Wilkins Park, that is already designated as no parking, because right now it's a $30 ticket and nobody cares. So it's really difficult and for fire and ambulance to respond to the beach, which has happened several times down here. They're parking in the middle of the road. So you can also just call a tow company and say, you are now hired to remove cars from here and they police it. It's not, it's in a no parking zone. They're in a no parking zone.
Yeah, Lynn, it doesn't actually work that way. You have to actually have a by law officer and you have to have a police officer. It's actually a lot more complicated. But I mean, I've been working with Michael Prowse. I've been working with Brent Forsyte, who is, you know, leading the, the parking strategy and the transit strategy. And I feel that this is a 90% great solution. And obviously we're going to learn. And if we find that this is not working, then myself or Mayor Lehman can call emergency meeting to council like we did last year when the beaches and we can have an emergency meeting in the summer break and we can, we can make changes quickly. But I don't think we need to go there. I've, I've got full confidence that the plan we have right now will relieve a large portion of the, if you want to call it quote unquote chaos that we had last year.
So, and Linda, I'm, I know we got to get to some other questions, but for what it's worth, there's two things that I think are going to be fundamentally different this year. One is, and we'll look for the provincial reopening plan tomorrow. But they have already told us it's not going to be a regional reopening. That's what caused the biggest problem last year. Because with the 905 and the 416 under lockdown and the 705 wasn't, people came up. And that, that won't be in play this year. The second thing is all the things that council has done. And I think between closing the beach or at least taking the measures that have been taken at the beach, all of the expanded parking restrictions that Counselor McCann and Counselor Jim Harris have, have championed and pushed. I'm really hopeful that all of this effort by Andrea Miller, by our by law staff and, and so on, will also have an impact. But Mike is also quite correct to say that if the same problems occur, there, you know, we can direct increased resources to it and whatever that looks like. So I, I do appreciate, I do appreciate all the concerns. And please let us know right away what is going on. Just as you've done tonight, please let the police know right away. If you've got, you know, groups partying in the bush and misusing the beach and that kind of thing. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for that, Linda. So we do have a pre-submitted question. What operational savings has the city achieved versus budget over each of the last five years compared to property tax collection totals and increases over the same period of time?
Thank you for that.
Well, my understanding, there would be no math. Sorry, go ahead, Mike. You can go ahead. I got some, some info from staff. So you go ahead.
Great. So I appreciate the question. And this was actually a question that was, I submitted early. So I actually do have a pretty full answer for you. I would not have been able to do this off the cuff. But over the last three years, staff have achieved the following savings. Salary gapping of 5.6 million. Energy manager program has saved over 3.2 million in utility costs. Debt financing cost of 2.7 million, lower by borrowing directly from credit markets. And investment revenues have increased by 2.7 million with our in-house treasury team and prudent investment board. So that was from, from my CAO. And if that has any more clarity, then you can, you can ask away.
So it was a pre-submit. So I'll just add to it that, you know, there's a constant effort by our CAO and our executive management team to deliver operational savings. But I think what, what Mike's just outlined are, are four big buckets that are because the city chose to do things differently. And I think there's two quick points I want to make on that. One is because we hired some people. So that may seem really counterintuitive. But when we hired a guy named Thierry Raisin, who was a, he worked on Bay Street and we brought him to Barry to better manage the city's money in short-term investments. Thierry has already generated those $2.7 million in savings. That's extraordinary. And he's obviously more than paid his salary 20 or 30 times over. And, you know, another good example of that going back a little further is the city used to farm out so much of its legal work that we would regularly spend more than a million dollars a year on lawyer's fees. And we set up a legal department. We hired some lawyers to do the routine stuff that the city does all the time. Things like easements for road expansions and real estate transactions. And that generated just over half a million dollars in savings in the first year that, that we had that department. So sometimes, and the reason I say that is because it's very counterintuitive. Lots of people say you should cut staff. You should, you've got too many people working there. There's too many people on the sunshine list and those sorts of things. And I understand that point of view. But sometimes when we in-source or when we bring people in who have skills to save us money, they deliver those kinds of savings. And Thierry, the guy who saved us 2.7 million on our, our investments or increased the return, excuse me, is one of those examples. Lauren, I see we're at about 8:13 and our guests are being very tolerant to be with us longer than we asked them to be. Please, Tracy and Dean, if you have to go, please don't feel bad at all that you have to drop off the call. I know there were a couple more pre-submits and there are a few more in the Q and A. So we maybe just do 10 more minutes of Q and A, Lauren, and then we can wrap things up.
Happy to. We do have one raised hand. Happy to. We do have one raised hand, uh, left. So if I may ask, um, just to keep it brief, Daniel, I will add you to the conversation. And then we'll, uh, we'll go from there.
Yep. Thank you, Lauren. Thanks very much, everybody for sticking around. Um, my question's kind of a two-part, uh, related to traffic calming. Do we have any idea as a percentage, um, for radar speed boards and temporary cushions, you know, what percentage we spend each year on temporary measures versus permanent measures? And then the second part of the question is trying to understand how and what criteria we use to determine what becomes permanent. Um, if someone could perhaps share what those criteria are. Um, so there's a lot of portions of Berry that wait a long time to get on those lists. So it'd be nice to know how we decide. Thanks.
Sure. I can, uh, take this one. Uh, so Dan, how you doing? I mean, before I was elected, Dan, uh, took me aside on the street and was telling me the, uh, the concerns on Grand Forest and, uh, uh, Dan, uh, has some special, uh, knowledge with, uh, with speed management. So, uh, you know, Dan, no new information I'm going to give you then, and then I've given you it before. Maybe, uh, Mayor Lehman will have some new, some different insight or different angle or a different positioning, or maybe Michael Prowse will. But, uh, quite frankly, you know, the city staff do ask, uh, ward, uh, counselors where they like to position the speed cushions and the, uh, temporary and the permanent. And then we look at data from the police and we look at complaints in from service Berry. And then we make our mind up and, and we make decisions. And unfortunately on Grand Forest, you've had a speed cushion there for, I believe, uh, three or four years straight. And, uh, we just need more, which means we can't have a speed cushion in every single street or we can, but that just means that we're going to have to raise taxes. So we had the lowest tax increase we've ever had in 20 years and, uh, that comes at a cost, less speed cushions. So that's the, uh, that's the, the determination of, of how we, uh, how I determine a speed cushion in Ward 10. Uh, the second part, uh, you're asking the cost efficiency of a speed cushion to a permanent off memory. I believe that the return on investment on a permanent speed, um, uh, cushion or a speed, um, bump is I think six years. Uh, I'm not sure if the mayor or Michael Prowse can tap in, but, um, after six years, it's the permanent one actually makes a lot more financial sense. I think it's six or nine years. I, I determine what, what material she uses.
So if we've been waiting 11 years, then a permanent would have made sense.
Well, we just introduced permanent. So Dan, you know, I, I appreciate your question. We just introduced a first pilot project, temp, uh, permanent speed cushion on concert and standing in two years ago, right? So we're just getting data now. And listen, I understand your frustration with, uh, with red tape and with politicians and politics and city hall. Uh, so I get it. Like it's not brain surgery. Let's just put one down and, and all those streets that need them, but I, the city of area and council have been really been pushing it. And this council is stronger than the last council has really made it, uh, one of their mandates that we're going to have more permanent because return on investment is better for the city of Berry. And quite frankly, it's better year round. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to time in. If not, then, um, Dan, you and I, you and I can talk offline about this, then I'm, I'm more than happy to do that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, the question's basically answered. I think the point made on, you know, what, what are we spending every year in labor and distraction, uh, to deal with something temporary when we could be doing it permanently? And move on, uh, to some other area.
Dan, I am on your side. I am for permanent and not for the temporary.
Just, I actually submitted the other question on the op savings, uh, Mayor Lehman. Um, so the, the, it sounded like about 20 million bucks or something, give or take. So well done. Um, I, I'm just, part of the question was kind of driving it. What, what percentage is that of our overall budget and, and what do we budget for every year?
So we don't budget for, wow, once we've, we've, um, instituted something, Dan, that generates, uh, an annual savings, then it will go into the base budget. Um, so in the first year that it's accomplished, it's new, but, uh, every year that it's continued, if it's a recurring savings, um, then we'll, we'll budget it to the best extent we can. And some things were, you know, we'll, we'll do better in year than we expected. A great example last year was, uh, the interest rate that we got on some debentures that we placed for, um, uh, actually for the first responders campus. So, uh, we placed, uh, 10.25 million in debt, uh, which was part of the money used to build the, uh, police and ambulance hub. And we got a much lower interest rate than we expected. And as a consequence, we're saving money and that will be every year. Um, but you know, when it's something like, um, uh, recycling roadsand, uh, if we work that, you know, the first year we do that, if it works, well, uh, you know, that's a, a windfall, if you will. Uh, and then in subsequent years, it's, it goes into the base budget.
Got it. Great. Thank you. And I did want to say a positive note. I know it's been hard. You guys are doing a great job and, uh, appreciate the changes that it sounds like are going to be made for, um, uh, the waterfront and, uh, the crowding outage we had last year. So thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you, Dan. So Lauren, this is usually the time in the night when we try and do a speed round of the outstanding questions, uh, which means one sentence answers by whoever is, uh, answering the question. Should we try and get through at least the ones in the Q and A? I think there's four or five left.
Yep, I can happily assist with that. So just a question for police. Who's the community, uh, police officer designated to Ward 10?
Uh, thank you for that. I just want to explain that, that the officers are not actually, uh, per wards. The neighborhood policing model is a little bit different, the boundaries, but I do, uh, want to get back to you on that. We've had a bit of a shuffle. So there will be typically four officers assigned generally to, to Ward 10. So I don't know if we can get some contact info and I can get back to you or let Counselor McCann know and he can disseminate that information if that's okay.
That'd be great. A quick question for superintendent. Is the school opening September 2021 or 2022?
2021, we're opening this coming September.
Hooray.
Good answer.
Is Wilkins Beach still a beach for locals to use?
Oh, Mike, you're on mute.
Sorry, that, Mary, I mean, uh, so Wilkins Beach is now Wilkins Park. And, uh, there is sand still going to be left on the beach, on the park and, or on the beach of the park. And, uh, it's not designated as a beach. So therefore they want the traffic on Google, on our websites, on all social media. We'll say Wilkins Park. Uh, but if you and your family would like to go down to the park and sit in the sand and go into the water, that is still, uh, very much, uh, available to you. I was down there late last night around nine o'clock, uh, and, uh, to see some of the, uh, the construction and see the signs and see some of the, uh, you know, the, um, uh, the, the park and city staff did a, not a good job. They did a great job, uh, with the fencing. Uh, and, uh, there's going to be some, uh, some growing pains with that as well. But if you're, uh, looking to put a lawn chair up and, uh, catch some rays and jump into the water, uh, it's waiting for you.
Thank you so much. Um, with the density in Ward 10 expanding and the use of the waterfront, is there considerations for purchasing or expanding the waterfront property?
Yeah. So that is a interesting question because I, I, I definitely had many conversations with our CAO. And, uh, I would say that, uh, the answer is yes. Uh, but it's, uh, going to be comprehensive. You know, we've got a lot of protected land, uh, that we need to, uh, put forward. And, uh, city staff are developing, you know, what that's going to look like. So I'd say the easy answer is going to be yes. Uh, if you ask me any more detail, then I'm going to have to maybe ask, uh, the mayor or ask, uh, Michael Prowse to give some maybe insight.
So, uh, Daphne, thanks for the question. Uh, or sorry, I'm not sure it was Daphne. Uh, uh, thank you for the, Christina, thanks for the question. Um, so the, uh, whether or not the waterfront parks themselves might expand? Doubtful. Most of the land is private property, very expensive. Even if people were willing to sell it to the city, it's unlikely we would expropriate it, knock down houses and put in park. Where I think you are going to see a ton more parkland is, uh, as Ward 10 is, uh, it grows. So, uh, in all of the new neighborhoods, every new plan of subdivision, there is a park within five minutes walk of every home. And a full third of the new lands in the south end of the city of Berry, the annexed lands in Berry, a full one-third are preserved green space. All of that's going to be natural area. It's going to be connected stream corridors, much like, um, uh, Wilkins Park. Uh, it is going to be, uh, neighborhood parks. Uh, there is going to be naturalized area like the Arda bluffs. Uh, it, it's a much higher, uh, amount than historically. So, uh, you know, I think in terms of the amount of parkland that's going to be, you know, call it within a five minute drive of, uh, of, of Ward 10 or as part of Ward 10, even as the new subdivisions come in, there's going to be a lot more there. I think the waterfront is going to be tough because all of the land inside Berry's boundaries on the waterfront is certainly spoken for. Uh, and, uh, it would mean probably purchasing, you know, homes and, and, and knocking them down.
Thanks so much. We do have a quick question about the, um, installation of, of barbecues or fire pits. Would it be considered by council to install permanent, uh, fire pits or barbecues in specific parklands? In order to avoid people, um, doing things randomly and uncontained.
Yeah, this is, this was, this was a key piece of the reason I supported banning barbecue. So for many, uh, people, you know, being able to have a barbecue with their family is a big part of going down to the waterfront. The problem is people weren't doing it safely. It was a huge problem at Tyndale, for example. Uh, and I know about the problems, of course, we've had in the bush at Wilkins. There are, are going to be permanent fire pits, barbecue pits at Minette's and at Centennial. Uh, and thanks to the good work of Counselor Jim Harris, uh, the Minette's ones weren't going to go in for another year. They've been moved up, so they're all going in for the summer. In fact, I think some of them are in at Centennial already.
That's great. So we did speak, this is our last question, and we did speak a little bit about the sand at Wilkins Park. Uh, but a specific question, will city staff still clean the sand at Wilkins Park this summer?
So the answer to that question is going to be that there, once the construction's finished, they're going to manicure the, uh, the existing sand. Uh, there was that they're going to fix the, the, the main where it washed out much of the sand. But they are not going to introduce any more, uh, sand and they're not going to be maintaining this sand. So I mean, if you want to reach out to me, there's a more comprehensive answer I can give you. You can go to, uh, Mike McCann Loves Berry or Mike dot McCann, uh, berry.ca. And I can actually, once the restrictions are over, meet you down at the beach. I've met probably over a hundred residents, uh, over the past little bit and walk you through exactly, uh, what the city is planning to do and, um, but obviously wait until lockdown is done.
Okay. Well, I know we're 25 minutes past, uh, when we originally thought we'd finish, but I'm really glad we're able to answer so many questions. And thank you so much to all our guests for sticking with, uh, the, uh, the whole thing. There was a schools question right there at the end and it was, it was the softball that I was, I was really glad that you could answer that, uh, the school is opening this fall. Uh, thanks, Counselor McCann, for inviting our special guest from the, uh, school board and, uh, to Constable Brooks, Sergeant Alport, Staff Sergeant Gates. Thank you. You've done a number of these town halls, answering questions around the city. Uh, and we appreciate the good work that you do to keep us safe every day, especially amid these difficult times. Uh, so unless there's anything further, Counselor McCann, I think, uh, we are probably good to wrap up at this point. Uh, anything else, Mike?
You know what? I'm just going to basically, uh, amplify everything that you just said, and I really appreciate the police services and I appreciate the school board. And I just want to let the school board know that, uh, it is definitely high on my priority list to, uh, build a strong connection uh, with you, listen to you, we respect you, listen to your concerns and, uh, really, uh, I'd like to, uh, just strengthen, uh, city of Berry and the school board, just to make our community the strongest and quite frankly, uh, the best it can be. And as the slogan says, let's find a better way together.
Okay. Thanks to all the members of the public and the last and biggest thanks to Lauren Wild and our, our emcee and organizer tonight, Nina Brincaccio from my office who has been taking notes, folks. Please email Lauren. That's the email that you got the link from. If you do have any follow-ups from tonight or want to, uh, reach any of our guests or of course Counselor McCann or myself. Thanks for spending a warm evening with us, everyone, and stay, stay, stay safe. There we go. Good night, everyone.